So this board meeting of the Board of Education for August 23rd, 2022 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tab. The meeting is being streamed live on our website, and then we are also recording it, and it will be posted and replayed over the next couple of weeks. So you can check the district website in order to watch that. And as I mentioned before, good evening. Thank you all for being here. And Director DePass is joining virtually this evening, I believe, although our technical difficulties may be making that challenging. So she was not feeling well and is modeling good behavior by joining us remotely. Before we get started, I want to share a few reminders. We ask that all members of the public attending to tonight's meeting treat each other, staff, and the board with respect, and please do not interfere with the ability of the board to conduct its business. Those wishing to display placards, signs, or banners must remain in the auditorium foyer behind the seating area and may not block any attendees' view of the proceedings. Also, please try to keep the walkways and the aisles clear, and in general, we would appreciate it if you could just be mindful of others in the room and the words you use and be aware of who's watching, including our community's children. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We're now going to vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you would like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. And Ms. Bradshaw, are there changes? I believe there is one change to the consent agenda.
There was one item that was pulled from it and is now its own.
And so I believe that is Resolution 6566, which was on the consent agenda, is now going to be its own item after that. So the consent agenda now includes Resolution 6564, 6565, 6567. Anything, any board member, anything in addition board members want to pull off? Okay, do I have?
I had a question around the, I don't know, the field trip for Lincoln.
I actually received an answer to a question about that that I just saw, and I didn't have an opportunity to share it with people, and I don't think Margaret Calvert is here right now, so I can probably answer.
Well, let's do this. Let's get, if I can just have a motion in a second on the consent agenda, and then let's have a brief conversation about that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Great. Director Green moves. Director Hollins seconds the motion. So any board discussion? Director Hollins, what's the question around the field trips?
I just asked, the question was, are we paying for this field trip? And if we're not, why are we voting on it?
It's a contract that is being entered into between the school district and the provider, but it's going to be, those funds are going to be reimbursed by Lincoln from largely parent funds, and then to the extent that individual participants can't pay the full amount, there will be fundraising activities. So that was the answer that I got from staff.
Isn't this the field trip just approval, or is it a contract?
Well, it's a, it's a contract with the provider, Music Celebrations, or whatever.
So this is, yeah, 91930, PS Music Celebrations International.
I can add just a little technical piece. When the monies come in through families fundraising, et cetera, they go into the student body funds at Lincoln and then become district funds. And so that's why there's a technical need for board approval for a contract over $150,000. We're actually looking at that role to make sure that it makes sense, but we've actually talked about this technical issue quite a bit.
Okay, so are we fronting this money upfront and then getting reimbursed, or it just as it comes in?
It's as it comes in, is my understanding. I don't know if Margaret's made it down here.
When I looked on it, it looked like it had a timeline for payments. And so if the trip ain't until, you know, March, how's those payments getting done prior to it?
There's a timeline by which each participant or the fundraised monies have to be paid, or there's a forfeit provision, and the percentage of forfeit increases the closer you get to the trip. There's quite a bit of money, I understand it. Again, I'm a little out over my lane, but I understand that there's quite a bit of money in there because this trip started, the fundraising, in 2020.
This was originally supposed to happen in 2020.
There's Margaret, she can know.
Margaret can.
But the governance piece, I can help with.
Thank you.
No running.
She's not Karen.
She doesn't have scissors.
Were you able to hear the specific questions?
I did not hear the specific questions, so if...
So I think it's around, it sounds, well, I'll let Director Hollins.
Sure.
Yeah, so my question, I have two questions. One, are we paying for this? I guess also we're not. But then I was asking, well, why are we voting on this if we're not paying for it? And then how are the funds getting dispersed? Could it look like it's a timeline for money to do so if we're going into a contract with this organization? Are we going to be paying this money out since we're in contract with them and then get reimbursed from the fundraising? I just want to know how all that stuff works.
And this is Music Celebrations International.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There are a couple of pieces about the trip. The contract as it is, is, it's with, it's through Lincoln's, it's through a student body funds account is what it is. So it's not a, it's not a PPS general fund account, it's through Lincoln. It is a, in 2019, in the summer of 2019, this trip was proposed. It was, it came before the board, it was approved. Fundraising had started, the funds, part of the funds had been fundraised at that point. We got to March 13th of 2020, and the trip was canceled. So here we are, two years later, as an opportunity for the trip to happen. And part of what needs, the order of the things that need to happen in order for the field trip to be approved, there are a number of steps. One is that we have to approve the planning for the field trip, then we have to approve the contract, and then we can go back and actually approve the field trip. The order is, that's the order that we go through. When I spoke with the team at Lincoln, there's fundraising that is happening, there is also family contributions, there is a plan to support families that cannot make the total contribution, and that's part of the fundraising. So it's in concert with that. It is based ultimately, what we have to do in this particular situation is that we have to agree to the maximum, so this is the maximum that the contract would be, but it's actually based on the number of students that will go. And then there's these timelines for, sorry, my mic just cut out.
They'll fix it.
They'll fix it, I should just not worry about it. Thank you. I'm not going to run, and I'm not going to worry about it. So, so the, well, what will end up happening is that they'll, they'll start to, as you're seeing in the contract, that there are some payments that start to get made. They need to be able to plan the trip to even figure out the total cost and airfare and that sort of thing. So that's what this, this part of the process does, is allow them to start planning and to, to say that they're committed to making the trip with some people, some number of students and some with the chaperones, and then that gets worked out over time. If for some reason, it's a, you know, like a, I'm sure that it was a, I'm going to say this wrong, a force de jour, or if there is a catastrophe again, like there was with the COVID, then we'd go back and look at the contract. But this is, this is through, this is a process that they've done and a trip that they have taken before and similar, what is, you know, that's the, it's a similar process to what they've done in previous years.
Great, thanks. And I think in answer your second question, board policies that we approve, is it all field trips, or field trips over a certain amount?
Over a certain distance.
Over a certain distance, which...
It was definitely.
Yeah. I mean, and I will just say, I think that's a board policy worth revisiting, but we can talk about that another time. Did you get your questions answered?
Yeah, well, one follow up. So by the district signing a max contract, and when I looked at some of the provisions, if it doesn't get done, is the district ultimately responsible if they, if some of these, if their families or something don't make it in, or are we financially responsible at any point?
It ends up being that, there are certain dates that are outlined in the contract. And, and I believe that, that there's dates about how much can get, how much funds would be refunded. In the, in the past, in this trip, what ends up happening is that the total number of students get determined, and then they work to get that number of students. It may not be this total amount, because there may be fewer students, they'll navigate those things, but it is not, we're not committed to the total amount. It's committed to, we're committed to the pieces that ultimately, when we determine the number of students, or the, it's the travel, the size of the travel party, and that will include chaperones, so.
I think my bottom line question, just if they can't, if they can't pay it for whatever the reason, I don't care what happens, earthquake, whatever, does the board have to come back and fund out money because of a breach of contract? Is the board responsible, or not the board?
PPS.
Because is PPS responsible in any way, shape, form, or fashion to have to pay out because someone else failed to meet their fiduciary commitment?
Responsibly. I mean, honestly, I think that's, and looking at the contract, I'm not the ultimate arbiter of that, so I don't know if Emily Cortinage is, or someone is, can speak to that. What I would say is that the liability rests with, with the, with the, well, that's, I don't even know that liability is the right word, but I think the responsibility and the interaction is with, is with the, is with Lincoln and with the groups at Lincoln. So I think that that is not, it is not the board. The board is saying that we're approving the agreement to have it happen with Lincoln. But the bottom line is, the contract is with the district. That's right. So we are on the hook with the contractor, but Lincoln is on the hook to the district.
I think it's a hard, it's a hard question to answer with precision because it depends on the date you would cancel, but I think the intended structure is so you have enough on deposit that if you back out, you get a portion of that back, which would leave no deficit to the district, it would leave a deficit to the individual participating family from private funds or fundraising. Now, I don't know that we've run through every scenario, so I don't want to give you an ironclad answer, but that it's designed that the money's on deposit enough to cover a withdrawal later with a penalty.
And so Cleveland was supposed to go to Disneyland for spring break in March of 20, and like we had a planning meeting the week before school got closed. And so what happened with that trip is families who'd paid in got a small, got a percentage back. So I like to tease my daughter about her $400 t-shirt because we didn't get all the funds back from the agency, but because, you know, it was extenuating circumstances, we did get a portion back, the district didn't have to pay that. I think if Lincoln were to say, we don't want to do this trip, we don't have enough kids, there'd be an amount that Lincoln would have to pay, and then the rest, per the contract, would close. But I think if it's something disastrous, like what we experienced with COVID in Cleveland was that the company refunded a big chunk of our money.
Director Brim Edwards?
Yeah, I guess, and this is not the specific contract, but it raises a general question about sort of like who gets credit, or who's creditworthy, and like, do we have like some transparent standard for schools that if the district, say you don't have all the funds in hand, and the district is going to somehow have some sort of obligation, like what, what is the criteria versus, hey, we know you guys are good for it? Just so it's a universal principle, not like, we know this school community can like, you know, turn up the fundraising and cover it, and so therefore we'll approve it. But it seems like it would be useful for us to have a more transparent set of criteria or how we extend credit.
Yeah, I'm not, I guess I would characterize it slightly differently. So I don't know that it's, it's PPS extending credit. It is, it is back to Liz Lars, it is, it is a, there are incremental payments, right? Like that's what this part of it says, is there's incremental payments, and once, once those deposits are made, then the refunds come back at, you know, to exactly what Director Lowry said, was that, you know, there's some get withheld from the company and potentially are not, and that's, that is the piece that would happen. It is not saying that per se that we're, that we are doing anything upfront and that people are, you know, in that realm, right? So often what the piece about field trips, and when we do field trips and people plan them, you, you have to get a sense of the cost of what the trip is, and so you have to do, you have to approve the planning of the trip, and then it supports what that looks like for the, what is the level of fundraising that's going to be necessary for the trip, and then, and then what are those markers as we go through? So part of what, the initial piece that we've done with, often with, when teams or schools or choirs or bands are planning trips, is that you approve the original, the initial planning, and then there are, you know, some check-in points along the way about, and this is usually done at the building level, right? So are people on progress to have sufficient funds and to make the trip viable and, and as we go? But the, what is slightly different about this is that the, the, the planning and the contract piece kind of happens at the same time with the, with the, with the company. So this is really a contract to start the planning with the company and the approval to do that.
Thanks, Director Calvert. Are there still concerns with this contract from the board? Okay, let's move forward then. Kara, is there any public comment? Sorry, Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 6564, 6565, and 6567. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Great. Next up, next item is the memorandum of understanding with the Portland Association of Teachers to approve substitute incentives at low fill rate schools. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, good evening, directors. Thank you, Chair Scott. In an effort to recruit, retain, and build a substitute workforce, the offices of school performance, teaching and learning, and human resources have collaborated to develop a series of strategies aimed at creating a stronger substitute teacher workforce, helping to reduce many of the challenges that have been experienced, particularly during this pandemic. I'm going to ask our Chief of Human Resources, Sharon Reese, to come up and share why it is we're recommending that the board approve this financial incentive that we believe will encourage higher substitute fill rates at particular schools at which we've had lower fill rates than in prior years. Chief Reese.
Good evening. I'll actually be very brief. We are looking to stabilize staffing at schools that had very low fill rates for absences for last year. It's not the only thing we're doing. As Superintendent Guerrero identified, we have a number of mitigation strategies and follow-ups that we are layering in. This one is an immediate operational shift to encourage higher fill rates, where we have historically, and particularly last year, incurred very low fill rates. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and get a motion to put it on the table, and then we will have board discussion. So do I have a motion second?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Great. Director Green makes a motion. Director Brim Edwards seconds to adopt Resolution 6566. And now we'll open it up for any board discussion.
Yes, I actually, the one who actually, well, I think one of the ones who actually had this pulled, so I know this came up last year as well, when we talked about this piece. And, you know, when we talk about low fill rate schools, a lot of times we're talking about underserved schools, talking about schools that have a high number of African-American or Latino kids in them. And I guess it just, once again, it goes back to, for me, that we're incentivizing teachers to go to these underrepresented schools, which is just kind of, just puts a bad taste in my mouth when we're talking about incentivizing them on our, especially off the backs of our most vulnerable kids. You know, if we have any substitute shortage or issue, it seemed like that remedy would be systematic wide. It would be doing something for all of our substitutes, not just the ones that go into, you know, ones that deal with black and brown students. And this is a practice that's been going on for a while. I talked to other past teachers that they've given these incentives, and they've been at different names at different times to incentivize them to go into these underrepresented schools. So I guess my thing is that if we are going to think about changing the system, well, when we should start now and not provide these incentives just to go into these, you know, underserved schools, it seemed like there'd be a better option or better motion or something else that we need to do in order to get the support that we need for our underserved schools and not by disincentivizing.
I don't disagree, Director Hollins. What you're seeing here is our short-term strategy, and we, we need short, midterm, and long-term strategies working together to shift this outcome. Ultimately, we need stable staffing in each one of our schools. There's a lot of work we need to do to get there, and this is something we hope has an immediate impact to create a strong start to school.
I did appreciate in the staff memo, you know, the couple of items that were mentioned that are working to stabilize and beef up the substitute workforce in ways other than just the pay incentive, but if you're talking about systemic change, I mean, this could be something on the table in our next round of negotiations on the substitute contract, because there certainly are districts who, when you put in to be a substitute, there are districts that have the ability to assign people. I mean, that's something, to my understanding, we could consider in our next round of negotiations around the substitute contract, but at this time, our substitutes have the ability to accept or reject a specific placement, and that's why we end up with these imbalances.
Yeah, and I guess that's, going to your point, that's what, I guess for me, not approving this now to focus on that particular process that you just mentioned would be a kind of a point for the board, as I see, say, hey, you know what? We need to change it. We need to change it now, because the same comment you said last year, this is a temporary thing, well, now we're saying it again this year. And I'm sure we'll probably say it again next year if we, if we just keep doing the same thing. Like I said, I've talked with a lot of other past teachers and substitutes, there's always been some kind of incentive, whether there's been other different names and different administrations, to, to do this, to do what we're doing now. And I just, like I said, it just, it just does something to me that it seems like we are, once again, profiting off of the backs of our underserved black and brown kids, once again. And if we're going to do that, I don't have a problem incentivizing, but this incentivization, I feel, should maybe come from how the kids are performing, not, not just because a substitute or some don't want to go to a school or not go to school. And I've talked to, like I said, I've talked to certain teachers, a lot of teachers around, and that's the case. They can pick and choose what school they want to go to or not want to go to. A lot of the black schools or brown, predominantly black or brown schools, a lot of teachers don't want to go to, so they choose not to go there. If we want to change the systematic, if we want to have change, we have to start now, we have to start at some point, and not to keep going down the same because of the needs that we have.
We have, one of the, one of the elements that we have layered in here is additional professional development, doubling down on our professional development for our substitute educators, addressing the sorts of things that we know are successful in classrooms, and having more prepared substitutes. I am, I want to make sure that there isn't confusion, just because of some of the framing that you just provided, when you say profit off of black and brown students, I just want to make sure that the public understands that there isn't a greater cost to those schools, this is, this is central office resources being placed in those schools. I just don't want there to be confusion about the... It, it doesn't come out of a particular school's budget, it comes out of the central office budget.
Well, yeah, but ultimately, that's still the district, whether it's...
Absolutely. It is the district across, yeah.
And I think, I think Director Hollins' point is that, is that the substitute teachers are getting paid more to go into these schools, and that's the whole goal of the incentive. I actually, I think this is a really powerful point, and, and I think it is one that you made last year, and Director Constance, I really like your point about, you know, what are the changes that we need in order to avoid this in the future? I, I think what I'm, what I'm struggling with, I mean, because honestly, it's, I think you're right, and I think that, that the idea, it is, it is distasteful, right? That we have to pay people to go teach our black and brown children more than, than someone else, and I am interested in changes that would essentially allow us to assign. So if you want a substitute teacher for us, we're going to, we're going to tell you where you get to go that particular day. What I'm concerned about, though, is if we don't, if we don't do this in the short term, some of the statistics that I think Director Brim Edwards, you had asked for, show that some of these schools have replacement rates of 50 or 60%, which means that in 40 or 50% of the time, am I correct, that those students do not have a teacher when we cannot get a substitute into that classroom?
So to this point, Chair Scott, I think our new chief of schools, who's no stranger to staffing schools and the immediate impact that the instability does have, I think he'll want to share a little bit about what our school leaders are expressing as well.
Yeah, and I apologize for coming up late. I wanted to make sure I followed protocol, so I wasn't called up specifically, but I... I saw...
He showed initiative, that's a plus.
I saw Chief Reese, and I was like, I got to go up and kind of say a few things. First of all, I just really appreciate this conversation, and I think what Sharon said is accurate in that this is a short-term mitigating piece, looking at data from last year. And the reality is, is that when you don't have teachers in front of our kids, our kids suffer. That means you're collapsing classes, that means it really just becomes a supervision piece. And, and just know that, that we experienced that immensely in, in my former district as well. And so it's no longer than about instruction, it's about supervision. We need to give our kids opportunities, we need to give them chances, and we need to put people who can teach in front of them. And it is, I agree with you, Director Hollins, I agree, we need to think more of the why, but to me, this is a, this is a short-term piece, that big picture stuff, absolutely. Like, we are engaged in that dialogue, we are committed to it, but after looking at the data, it was astounding, and this was an opportunity to put staff in front of our kids. I think that's the most important thing, and, and it not only affects our kids, but it affects just the culture in the community within that, within that building, our staff, our administration, it's significant. And so I look at it that way, and I totally get what you're saying, and I, and I chose, we choose to look at this as a short-term deal, we understand it, but we couldn't ignore the data, and we, we had to act and present this to you.
So two questions. When you say short-term, what is that timeline looking like? Because like I said, we heard this last year, it was short-term, and once again, when I talk with teachers who've been in the district for 30, 25, 30 years, this is not, nothing new. So when you say this is, I guess like it's recent, this is not a recent phenomenon. This is, from my understanding, this is something that has been historically that we have done, so this is not a short-term, this has already been a long-term issue, and we just keep putting a Band-Aid on it, Band-Aid on it, whether you call it disincentivar, I can't remember what the other names that they told me that it used to be called to get teachers to go into those schools. So I just want to, when you, when you say it's temporary or short-term, it hasn't been short-term. This has been a long-term problem in this district for a lot of decades. So once again, when we talk about, I want to get rid of short-term because it's not a short-term issue. My thing is, what are we going to do now to be able to get the teachers where they need to be, or subs, where they need to be, and where we want them to be at, and outside of this incentive-based piece?
I, I just want to add to that, kind of bring up the elephant in the room, which is the underlying problem of the high, astonishingly high levels of absences that are causing this problem, and they're disproportionate across our schools, but they're high in all of our schools. So if we're talking about addressing root causes, we need to be talking about how do we address the issue of teacher absenteeism overall? What can we do to support culture? What can we do to support our teachers? How much do we understand about, you know, why people, why we have such high absences? I mean, obviously, last year was a different set of circumstances with COVID. It was, you're saying this has been a problem for a long time? It has, but it was, was and is significantly worse, but that's one of the root causes we have to address.
Did Director Green, did you?
Yeah, I, so, and I've been rationing with this, and as much as I, I intend to, because of the short-term, I do intend to, to sort of move forward with it, but I'm also going to hold fast and strong that we're in a bartering session contractually and with the, with the teachers, and there's going to be some non-negotiables for me, and that as we start looking at, I feel like we need to have incentives, because this is an incentive. We're talking about giving them incentive, right, to, you know, so that we can get them into schools that we want them to be in. And so we're, we're saying with gas prices and all this other stuff, let's give them this extra incentive to, to get to this school. Another incentive could also very well be, we're only going to call you three times to go to a school that we want you to go to, and if you choose not to go to these schools after three times, then we're going to take you off of our list and we'll move on to somewhere else. That's an incentive, because we're no longer going to employ you, we're no longer going to give you a shot. It's not enough, because I do hear you saying that we want people in the room that can, that can teach our kids, because that's true, we do, but we also want to make sure that they're teaching our kids. Simply having a pulse in the room is not significant. Simply having a warm body in the room is not significant. But we do need to do something for right now. So like, the, the house is on fire. So the, when the house is on fire, we're not going to talk about what caused the fire and all these other pieces. The immediate thing is to put the fire out. But after the fire, after the fire is put out, we do an investigation to say, what caused the fire? And then we go back and we dial it down. And if we got a bunch of teachers that are calling out on Fridays and, you know, this number, I'd love to see a data pool on that. I, I'd love to see Dr. Adams go back and pull the data and say, what is the, what is the, the ratio of teachers being absent on a certain day as to where we're needing so many substitutes? I mean, I can't tell nobody not to be sick. That's not what I'm doing. That's rude. Don't be sick. That's dumb. But are you sick every Friday? I mean, now, now I see a pattern. You know, I see, I see patterns of behavior. So I may not be able to tell you to be sick, but I can tell you, be sick on Wednesday because Friday is out for you because you've been sick on Friday too much. You've used up your Friday limits. But we have to be able to figure out something. And as a board, this is where we're going to have to, I feel like, this is just me personally now, speaking to the rest of my colleagues, to say, this is going to be the, the, the thing where a lot of people are going to be in our face talking about, oh, you don't support teachers and you don't do this and you don't love us and you don't care, when really what I'm thinking about is, I'm thinking about the students. And I'm thinking about, we have to hold the line. If we don't hold the line and if we start wavering and we start being wishy-washy, then they know they got access. So we have to have a, a non-negotiable when, when we start having this contract negotiation to say, I don't care what you say. I want this in it, and if you can't have this in it, then we don't have a contract. Do something different. Deal with it. And if we can't do that, then we need to stop talking about what we want. This is the season where we need to be, we need to be hard and we need to be intentional and focused on what we want for our kids, and that's by any means necessary. You don't like it, I'm, I'm rolling with the willing. I'm not dealing, I'm not trying to get a hundred percent. I'm not trying to get a hundred percent. I'm gonna roll with the Ashley, I'm gonna roll with the sixty, because the sixty, working hard enough, will pull in the other twenty. And then the twenty will get us to the eighty that we need, and the eighty will motivate the other twenty to either get with the program or get out of the program. So I don't care about a hundred percent. Everybody ain't gotta like me. I'm not here because I want you to like me. You don't pay me for that. So.
But we do like. Student Representative McMahon.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I would really like to recognize the merit of this, like, solution. I think that it's very important that we do get teachers and substitutes back into classrooms. I actually kind of disagree with the idea of the warm body because I think there is an element of the mental health of the student to have a person who is showing up in your classroom. And I think that that's actually really important because students need to feel supported in their environment. And I think that it's really important to make sure that we're maintaining this idea that in order to solve this problem in the long-term, we also need to be building the culture for substitutes. And that comes from both students and comes from this district and comes from teachers. And so I like the idea and I like the impact that we're pushing here to get stu, get students the teachers that they need. And I really think that on the subject of like, how do we rein in those teachers? Like, how do we look at the problem of like teacher absenteeism and like, how do we solve this? And I think it's really going to come from an active communication partnership, both of the recognition of the work that these teachers do, as well as trying to solve these issues. I think moving into it with the concept that like, oh, we need to like create a hard line and we need to really push them. I think it's the carrot and the stick that we need to be working on. We need to obviously have these teachers come in and we need to create boundaries. But at the same time, I really discourage the idea that we need to force them to do it because ultimately, we need to support our teachers in any way that we can. And I definitely recognize as a student that teachers on the front line, like, that is the most important element of our schools. And I, I don't know, I just, I guess that I think there is merit to this idea that we need to support teachers, we need to work on the culture more than anything else, and that a warm body actually means something for a lot of kids.
So, so I'm gonna add on to what Director Green had said when he said the house is on fire. The house has been on fire. It's been on fire. We have to at some point start putting out the fire. Bottom line, we have to start putting out the fire. When I went into certain schools this last year that had substitutes, that, and it was, at one of these schools, there were no learning happening. There was nothing going on. They were literally sitting there watching TV. I did this more than one occasion. You know, so once again, I don't know if the incentive base, I believe it went from thirty-five to fifty. I believe if that's the right number.
Full day rate in a contract, in the substitute contract right now is fifteen dollars and the half-day rate is ten dollars. It went from fifteen to fifty? This is what you're considering? The incentive? And then ten to thirty-five.
So I, once again, I just go back to the house is on fire and, and just having someone there. I get it, there's a lot of good subs out there, and I'm not trying to discredit any of the, the good ones that's out there. I've seen some bad ones. And it does, it does not, does any service to the kids that were in those classrooms at all. But once again, this incentive of, this, this policy of incentivizing, it just, it just rubs me the wrong way. Like I said, the house is on fire. Either we're gonna keep fanning the flames to try to figure it out, or we're gonna just start putting water on it.
We're hopeful that the absence rate goes down this year. Yesterday, or yesterday, it felt like yesterday. Last year, we are hoping is an outlier, and we are preparing for circumstances that we hope do not repeat this, this upcoming year. For example, we had quarantine absences in the thousands, like thirty-five hundred, over thirty-five hundred absences due to quarantine. That didn't exist before last year. So there are, there were unique circumstances in COVID that we hope don't repeat, but we absolutely want to be prepared for this, this upcoming school year. So it, it, do you think there's a distinction between what was last year's experience and what has been an ongoing concern, to your point, Director Holland? Some of this is ongoing, but I, I do want to point out that last year was a significant outlier.
Yeah, and I think with the, with the pandemic, I think that exacerbated a lot of stuff. It really shone a light on a lot of stuff. You know, so when you, when we talk about last year versus the year before, I get it. You know, a, a lot of things got, the light shined on it. But once again, when we look at historically, the house, this house has been on fire. And so, you know, and I, and I really appreciate the, the method you guys are trying to do to, you know, to get to help mitigate that. I, I appreciate that to the fullest. I just think we need to look at a different way to do that, and that's why I probably won't support this one today. Thank you.
So what I think you're hearing from the board is a pretty strong desire for some changes, to look at what, what the systemic changes would need to be in order to avoid this moving forward. And so I guess I would ask Superintendent that as, as we go through this year, and of course, we haven't taken a vote on this yet, I, I, I will support this tonight, but, but, but I think the, the arguments that Vice Chair Holland's are making are really powerful and, and lead me to, to want to see what, what those systemic changes are so that we don't have to do this in the future. And so I would ask that you report back in the future to the board on what those efforts are.
I appreciate the expressed comments and questions from directors and student rep, McMahon's remarks as well. I think what you see here is staff's recommendation to implement some levers that, that are within our sphere of influence, right? Let, we're not going to exacerbate absence rates by scheduling wholesale professional development activities. We know that that, for example, we'll, we'll be watching the calendar. But, but I guess what I want to say out there is, you know, we value our substitute educators. I know that we all do. We look forward to continued collaboration with our labor partner around making sure, no matter which qualified adult is in front of students, that they have a meaningful instructional day. I know that we all want that, and, and so, you know, we'll continue to look at, how do we support their growth? And frankly, we need that candidate pool. We, we hope that many folks who attempt to substitute, that they'll consider serving in K-12. The, the longer-term, you know, issues have, you know, just like critical shortage need areas have existed for decades in certain programmatic areas, special needs, you know, serving multilingual students, et cetera. You know, we do, I appreciate the desire to want to be creative and more innovative about it and not look at this from sort of a punitive lens. But how do we support making sure that we have stability in school communities that most need that would be a conversation certainly we should all look forward to. And when it comes down to collective bargaining, of course, you know, we'll stand at the board's direction and we should have a meaningful conversation about that. Our concern right now is school starts in a week, and we want to make sure that we have a plan in place and that we're able to communicate with the substitute pool. We really do want them to consider, you know, accepting those jobs when they come available. And of course, we're going to work at the school community level to make sure we have a culture where, you know, teachers, unless really necessary, are being conscious of the disruption that it can cause in any of our schools. So with, with all of that, we hope you'll, you will give it your best consideration.
Thanks, Superintendent. Did you have a final comment? Director Bremedward? Okay. I, I, yeah, we're hoping to move us on. We've been going on, yeah.
So I, I really want to appreciate the issues that were raised because it is a several-decade-long issue. But I also want to acknowledge the numbers for coming out of the pandemic really have exacerbated, so, the, the, that issue. And I'm gonna support it primarily as a bridge because of the pandemic and what's happened. Because I've seen, I guess, just a little bit of a, I guess, to add some to the, it's not just a warm body, because there's trade-offs when we don't have substitutes. So last year, I saw a social worker, a social, a school social worker teaching a kindergarten class, or a principal teaching a math class, or a central office administrator, you know, not doing their job here, but in, in a, in a school because there was, there was an opening. So I'm gonna support it for that. But the, when I look at this, we have essentially almost a third of our schools on the list for the incentive pay. And I would expect that, that should go down as we enter and have a, a normal school year with lots of supports. And to your point, Director Scott, I would say, I, I would like to see the data, I don't know, November, December, of what that looks, what that looks like. Because I think if, it, it isn't just, it isn't just pandemic-related, and we have to keep our eye on that issue, which when the substitute contract comes up, that's, that's the issue. But in, in the short-term, you know, is this what will make the difference or is it something else? And if this doesn't move the dial and we continue to have shortages, I mean, I would expect that we're just not going to continue to pay incentive pay and still have a really significant, I felt right. But I, I do want the social worker, the principal, and the central office administrator to be doing their jobs because they need to be doing their jobs. And hopefully, we've got a well-qualified substitute teacher pool that can fill in for our teachers when they're absent. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it, but I really think this is a, a, a good longer-term conversation for us to have.
Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay. Like to move us towards a vote. The board will now vote on Resolution 6566. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? So Resolution 6566 is approved by a vote of five to one with Student Representative McMahon officially, unofficially voting yes.
Chief Reese, are the provisions that were put in place during the pandemic to suspend the credentialing requirements for substitutes, certain credentialing requirements, are those still in place?
That's correct.
Or no?
They are still in place, yes.
For this whole school year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for that conversation. I think it was actually really important.
One last question. How did it go last year with the incentive-based piece? Did we see an increase?
It was, take up more jobs, and they were implemented, I believe, in December, so it wasn't full year. So the, the incentives included pick up additional jobs and you'll get like an extra day of pay. So it, they were different than before. The incentives for last year were straight from the contract, the five and the ten dollars, which is not a motivator.
No, I just wanted, do you see any improvement in that with, with doing that?
We did see, well, we, there were, again, there were layered strategies, right? So we were increasing the number of subs available as we were also providing financial incentives. And we did see an uptick in substitutes taking jobs and the number of subs available. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna now turn to student and public comment. Thank you for your patience, those who are here to comment. Before we begin, let me quickly review guidelines for public comment. First, we thank you for taking the time to attend the meeting, providing your comments. Input from the public improves and informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, or concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. And if you have any additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask you to email them to publiccomment@ppss.net. Again, that's publiccomment@ppss.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment, you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll hear a little chime after three minutes. And at that point, we'd appreciate it if you would wrap up your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have folks signed up for public comment?
We do. Mackenzie Weintraub. Yeah. I just wanted to note that the normal, if you've done public comment before, the timer's not there. You're gonna hear it from over here on my phone.
Thank you and welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is Mackenzie Weintraub, W-E-I-N-T-R-A-U-B. And I am the parent of an incoming kindergartner and a second grader at Glencoe Elementary, where I also serve as the PTA president. I first want to thank you all for prioritizing an equity funding model in the budget this year. I think that was the right move for children and families across the district, and I hope that that continues to be a priority. I also recognize that the budget has been set for this year as we're about to start school. But that being said, as families are getting ready for next week, there are still families who are frustrated, they're upset, they're confused, and they're wondering, why are they sending their children back to school with thirty-plus class sizes, especially as we're recovering from a global pandemic? This is true for all third and fifth grade students at Glencoe this year. Glencoe's not alone. There's other schools across the district that are facing these large class sizes, especially in southeast. I think this frustration is compounded when we learned that focused option schools were able to set their class limits. They were told to follow the PAT thresholds of class sizes, which at Glencoe, we would really welcome. That is a, in my mind, a very inequitable way of setting class sizes across the district. That brings me to another piece of inequity in funding for schools, which is the foundation system that I believe needs to be addressed as well. Some of the schools that have these thirty-plus class sizes have robust foundations. They will be able to buy back teachers and lower their class sizes. It's not true for Glencoe, and it's not true for several of the other schools that are seeing these high class sizes. Ultimately, I think it's the district's responsibility to adequately fund our schools. And when we have these high class sizes, understandably, families have to think about what's best for their child or children. And sometimes that means that more and more privileged families look at private school options and they leave the district. Or they look at other options within the district, like focused option programs where they're going to see lower class sizes. This pulls enrollment numbers from our neighborhood schools and exasperates the problem. Ultimately, I would love for us to all acknowledge that class sizes of thirty or more are just too large. And my hope is that the district and the board will do whatever they can to help decrease those class sizes across the district and ensure that no child has to go to school with thirty or more peers in one classroom. Thank you so much.
Orin Bernstein?
Welcome.
Hi. Hi, everybody. Thanks for letting me speak. So my name is Orin Bernstein, B-E-R-N-S-T-E-I-N. I have two kids, Vernon, Elliot, and Davis. And I'm a mechanical engineer. A couple months ago, I gave a small presentation to the Facilities and Operations Committee about using a thing called a Corsi Rosenthal-style filter box. I think several of you saw that. The response was quite enthusiastic, and I'm here to give an update with some further developments. For everyone that wasn't there, and just do a quick review. I thought that PPS did a great job measuring the air cleaning and exchange across all the schools in the school system. But the report found that there's probably some work needed to improve the quality of the air in the school system. So, and what I would like to talk about is these simple devices that consist basically of a high-grade furnace filter and a box fan. And counterintuitively, they're, as you would, you wouldn't suspect it, they outperform all available commercial HEPA filters and on an air clean per dollar, and even more surprisingly, on an air clean per decibel basis. So they're both more effective and more quiet. And this includes for smoke and small particles, like the droplets that carry the COVID virus. This has been shown in testing by the University of California, Davis, and the 3M Corporation, and a couple other sources. So based on the enthusiasm from the meeting with the Facilities and Operations Committee, I've been working with a team of motivated volunteers, including some very experienced engineers who lead or have led R&amp;D teams for several local, well-known companies. At the facilities meeting, I was asked whether there were kits to build these filters available. Thank you, Amy. And they, there are kits where you can buy the materials, but they're sort of onerous to put together. And so since that time, at the, the last meeting where I attended, my group has been working on making something a little bit easier to deploy. And so this, I'm going to showcase one of those here that's been running the whole time. Just so that everyone knows, this unit right here is probably cleaning as twice as, or as much air as two, more than two of the full, the current existing filters. If they're running at full blast, which is obviously very loud, and this is at its lowest setting. So. All it is is a, a box fan. And in this version, it's a, it's a series of filters that are taped together, but they can be folded so they can be laid flat, which will help kind of ship them around, move them around, and also help deploy them very quickly. And just a cardboard top and bottom. And we've found sources for all the materials from local companies here that can produce them. If cardboard feels like it's too not robust enough of a material, we've also designed a plastic version. This is a corner piece for a plastic version that would be more robust, but obviously a little bit more expensive. And so my, my request is that if it feels like this is something that, if the enthusiasm still holds and this feels like something that PPS is interested in, it would probably be, we're sort of ready to provide some. And I certainly don't mean to push you to get them from our team or whatever, but like if we can help facilitate it in any way possible. So.
Great.
But now would be a good time to like have me meet with someone and talk about it in more detail.
Thank you for the presentation. Yeah.
I'm going to say, I built four for my church. And former director Rita Moore helped me build them because she's very passionate about air quality as well, and they work incredibly well. And we've had them in our sanctuary for about eight months.
Oh, great. Excellent. So, and, and I'm going to just on the fly put you in touch with Dan Young, who's our chief operating officer, and sitting quietly, taking notes on his computer about this. So thank you very much for your presentation and for what you're doing to put these together for the community.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That concludes who signed up for public comment today.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw. Great. Thank you, everybody, for the public comment. That is actually, I think that's my first show and tell, so I really appreciated the, the box fan. Next up, we have comments from our Portland Association of Teachers President, Angela Bonilla. Thank you for being here this evening. And welcome as always.
Thanks for having me. Going to get settled. Hello, everyone. Thank you again for having me here. It's always great to be able to address this body. So as I hope to make a habit, I want to start off with kudos. So a kudos to Lisa Blunt, who has been coordinating the new educator orientation. It was amazing. I also want to appreciate Genevieve and Lejina, who co-presented with me and Jackie on our contract to our new educators. We had over 200 educators participating in new educator orientation. And it's just always great to see more folks joining the profession and coming and choosing our district. I want to also thank y'all for passing the substitute incentive pay. No worries. So, you know, as always, if I'm here, please feel free to call me up if you have any questions, no big deal. But I also want to make sure that I gave a little bit of perspective on that proposal. So Oregon is one of the few states that really values having highly educated and certified educators in front of students as substitutes. We have our substitute educators as part of our bargaining unit. So they must be certified substitutes to be part of our unit and to substitute in Oregon until the credentials were changed for emergency licensure last year. So we want to continue that tradition of having highly trained substitutes in our schools. And we are very supportive of this initiative because we want to make sure that we have those folks in the building, especially buildings that need them. So the concern around the disproportionate, the disproportionality around which schools are not being supported. So I want to give a little bit of context around that, right? So when you have a school that has a lot of folks with high needs and educators who may not have been meeting those needs yet because they don't have the skills or the training yet, right? Part of our responsibility as a district is to ensure that we have educators who are trained to support our kids, right? I know we've talked about this in the past, that we have trainings mandated by our contract around anti-racism, implicit bias, and culturally responsive practices. Those trainings have not yet been put in place by PPS. We bargained that in 2020. And so when we talk about making sure our educators are prepared to serve all of our students, including our Black and Brown students, those are the kinds of trainings that help folks feel like they will be, they won't be harming kids when they get to the school because they know how to actually serve them and respond to them in a culturally relevant and responsive way, right? On top of that, for our substitutes, one thing that folks may or may not know about substitutes is that depending on their performance in that day, a school can decide whether or not they want them to come back to that building. And being told, you know, we, it didn't quite work out, there was an incident, you didn't know how to deal with it, we didn't like that, you can't come back. Now that educator has to, you know, disclose that they were not asked back to a building, right? So any application you're doing after that to become an educator, to be part of an education system, you're marking, I have been told that I was not appropriately, you know, sufficient for that position. So that in and of itself is the deterrent, not specifically the kids that they're serving, right? So when we think about how do we get these folks into buildings, we want to make sure that they're supported so that they don't have these incidents where they might not be welcomed back because they don't know how to serve these kids. And so folks aren't saying, I don't want to go to that school because that's the school with all the brown kids. What they're saying is, I don't want to go to a school where I have a li, higher likelihood of not being able to serve these kids because I don't know how to do so and how to support them. Again, as a Black woman, as the first Black teacher of most of my students when they get to me in fourth grade, what I always tell folks is, I wasn't born knowing how to serve kids of color. I had to learn that. It was training, right? So what are we doing to train all of our educators to ensure that they know how to best serve our kids of color? Because it's not something that's innate, it's learned. And what we know about kids is that kids do well if they can. And if they are not doing well, there is a barrier or there's a lagging skill. And so I try to expand that to the rest of my world. Whenever I get frustrated in traffic, I'm like, whoo, people do well if they can. People do well if they can. Maybe they're having a hard time, maybe they're running to the bathroom, that's why they cut me off. It's fine. And so when I'm thinking about adults too, right? Like, they will do well if they can. So what are the barriers stopping them from best serving our kids? Because the reality is, I would rather have a substitute come to a building that they feel comfortable in serving and supporting our kids because they've been well-trained than have substitutes coming into buildings, saying the wrong thing, and causing harm to our kids, right? So I think this incentive is going to help our substitutes, you know, really try to weigh that. But I think it is, I agree, it's not an emergency if we know it's going to keep happening, right? Like, we've always had substitute shortages. COVID exacerbated that, but we've always had substitute shortages. So what can we do to support bringing in more substitutes? I think one piece with this emergency licensure is having kind of a grow our own process, right? If you had a year of substituting under this emergency license, which is great because it brought in folks who maybe didn't have a typical pathway into education into our buildings. Folks who reflected the students' lived experiences were finally coming in and being given the opportunity to teach, right? If you had a great year, then maybe the district is sponsoring you to get that emergency license on the contingency that you join a certification program. So you can be a substitute for several years as you're getting that, that degree. And then we have, we're eliminating some of that need, right? So I think there are ways that we can support our substitutes in making sure that they're supporting our students with appropriate training, with incentives to become professional educators so that our kids get the most qualified folks in front of them, whether their typical teacher is there or not. I think also, I just want to appreciate, Byroni, for your comments. I think, you know, educators, we want to come to work, right? Like, I, I told our new educators, I do this, I, I work because I want to get paid, but I chose this work because of the kids, right? So we want to be here, we want to support our students. And when we're not, there's, again, people do well if they can, there's a barrier, right? And folks want to go to work someplace where they feel like it's, they can be successful, where the work is sustainable, where they're able to leave at the end of the day and say, I did something good, I served these kids, as opposed to leaving every day and going, oh, I forgot to do this, oh, and I don't have enough time to do that, oh, and I didn't call this kid's parents, and I still have to do this other thing, right? Even as an elementary school educator, even though my hours were 7:45 to 3:30, I was regularly in the building by 6:30 in the morning because I had to make sure that whether or not there was an evening custodian, my classroom was clean, and I was prepared for the day. And I was usually there two hours after students were dismissed because I wanted to make sure that I was able to contact all those family members, make sure that I connected with special ed for the students who had accommodations, with the ELD teacher to make sure that all of my lessons for that week are actually using the correct scaffolds. And this is me getting into the like, you know, teacher lingo. But the reality is, is that we have more work to do to best serve our kids than we have hours we get paid for. And so it's really, really hard to, to hear like, well, these teachers may not just, are just not showing up when we know that we show up every day, and we show up every day before we're paid and after we're paid. And sometimes you just, there isn't anything left, and so you get sick. And so you're not able to come into work because you're sick, right? So I just, I really want to appreciate y'all for passing that, and I want to make sure that we are really thinking about, what is the longer-term solution? How can we start to develop the leadership and the excitement we saw with our emergency substitutes and, and develop them into long-term educators who want to stay at the district? Because substituting is also kind of a lifestyle choice, right? Not everyone wants to work full-time. There are people who want to be substitutes for their whole career, and they should have the training they need to, to be able to do that. And we can definitely support them in moving forward. The next piece I wanted to talk about was the ventilation. I know that there's going to be a presentation this afternoon or this evening talking about some of the upgrades. And I know that we had that article in the Oregonian about the schools not meeting the minimum of three air exchanges per hour. So I really appreciate the demonstration. I know some educators have made some of their own, and I, and I love hearing our community coming together to try to find ways to support our schools. So, you know, our coalition, as I spoke last time, of unions is asking that we provide employees five days for COVID-related expenses before they expend their sick leave because we all know that life happens and sick leave doesn't stay there for very long, especially if you have kids. And so if there is an incidence of COVID, we want to make sure, especially our custodians, our nutrition workers, have the opportunity to stay home when they're sick and still have pay. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're being preemptive and dealing with that and caught, and, and getting to an agreement before the year starts, before flu season, before the, all the kindergartners are finally all together and snotting all over the place, and then we're all getting sick. The last thing I wanted to touch on is around the FTE. I know we already heard from our PTA president at Glencoe about the equity around class sizes. And I know the budget has already been passed. And I also know that the district really values equity and providing positive outcomes for all of our kids, regardless of their zip code, regardless of their lived experience. I received an email from an educator at Alameda where they have three second-grade classes of 30 students. Just as a reminder, our second graders are kids who went to kindergarten during the pandemic online. They were the kids who came back to school for the first time in a physical building, and everyone was wearing masks, and they were all distancing. And so school hasn't been typical for them yet. They are coming back now this year in a school where they don't have lots of influx in their numbers. It's very typically whoever's enrolled at Alameda comes to Alameda, right? They're going to have 30 kids in each class. They have asked for the FTE, and, you know, the, the boundary is 32. So they have to wait until they have two more students to be able to break up their classes into students, into classes of 23, or 22 or 23. And I, I have a hard time believing that there, there's anyone who says, you're going to get just as good of an education in a class of 30 as second graders as you are in a class of 22, right? So I would love to know how we are dis, dispersing those FTE to schools that are starting to see these influxes because luckily, kids are coming back, right? I know there is another instance at Robert Gray where they're having kids joining sections. There are sections that are above the, the, you know, the number, the, the soft cap for those classes, but they haven't passed the average. And so they're not getting those FTEs yet either. The district typically waits until the 10-day drop after the first two weeks of school to, to reassign that FTE. And what that means is for these second graders, they will have spent two weeks of developing community with their educator, connecting with each other. And if two more kids show up and a teacher is assigned, that community is going to be splintered and redistributed, and then they're going to start that process again, right? So when we're thinking about how do we keep consistent learning happening in the classroom, that's a pretty big disruption because they're kind of restarting, especially for our little ones who didn't have the experience of school in person their first year of school and had kind of a disjointed, not-so-typical year last year. I think it's just also really important that, we were told multiple times last spring that we had to cut those 87 positions from classrooms because we didn't have the student population, right? But on, in the budget books, on the, on page 278 of the digital version of volume one, it says that the district has, has a net gain of 254 FTE. So when we have that, plus the 87 positions that were removed from the classroom, that's a total of 341 FTE that were netted last year, despite being told that 87 classroom positions had to be taken away. And I just want to make it also very, very clear, like, there are places in central office where I am sure we need staff, right? Like, we had educators this summer working alongside our PFSP partners, our PARAs, who were promised bonuses for working over the summer so we can support our highest-need students. They have yet to receive that pay, right? So I imagine that's a department where we could probably use some more FTE to support those folks, right? But when we have 341 FTE added and we're still seeing those cuts in schools, I'm really worried that there's a disproportionality between the student-facing supports and the supports that we're having in central office. They're very, very important to have all those things because all of these systems work together to support our students. But what, what is happening, you know, when our budgets are a moral document and we're seeing this disparity, I'm really worried about what we're saying and what we're actually doing to support our schools. And I don't know where those FTE are, right? Because it's, in, in the budget, it's a compliance document. It's not necessarily cut out for the layperson to understand. I know that there's supposed to be a version three that's coming out that we, that will be clearer for the community. But it doesn't clearly explain where those FTE are, right? And when we talk about licensed staff, it includes both classroom teachers, but also counselors, and also TOSSAs, and also POSAs, which are principals on special assignment. So there's lots of folks who will be in buildings, which is important, and are also not in the classroom, which is also really important. Because when we have larger class sizes, we have higher need because they are not getting the individualized attention they need. And so we need more support from those folks outside of the classroom. And then those supports are taken away from other kids, right? So it kind of dominoes into this bigger issue. So I just want to make sure that we are really pushing towards figuring out how to best serve our students and how to do that from the top down, right? And one way to alleviate that issue and concern around transparency is making sure that we're starting that budget conversation as early as possible. And I know that there is a calendar, there was like a draft calendar about starting as soon as possible, which I'm very excited about. And I think having that public input is going to be very, very important. I did see the email go out around the Community Budget Review Committee, which is great. And families, and this is like for the public, families, if you don't know, like, you can get, become part of that, that committee. If you are willing to come up here and testify, please apply and join so that we can get all, as many voices as possible, sharing their perspective around the budget.
Say that one more time for everyone.
So, there is a Community Budget Review Committee, and you can apply. The application, I believe, is due September tenth. So please, please apply. If you're willing to come up and do public testimony, the review doesn't have to be public, so you can come on by and give your opinion and share what you think is, is, should be a priority for our district. I think one way to really rebuild the trust with our community is ensuring that we have as many ways as possible for them to give their input and provide what they think should be the priorities for their schools. As always, our educators, our families, our communities, our staff are the ones who stick around and love and live by these schools. Because this is, this is our hometown, these are our schools, and we want to be here to support them. So, again, I just, I always appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak with y'all. And please don't hesitate to reach out and ask any questions. I would love to answer any questions, and thank you for the work you do. And, I mean, good luck to us all starting this school year, right?
Happy first day of school.
Yeah, we're coming up on it.
Thank you, President Panaya. Appreciate your comments. Next, we're going to move on to Student Representative McMahon, Students' Report.
Good evening, everyone. So as this is the last board meeting of the summer, and I'm about to move into my term during the school year as well as my senior year, I wanted to provide some comments on sort of what I would like to do. So, as student representative and as the new leader of the DSC, Jackson, my predecessor, told me that summer was a great time to figure out what the hell I wanted to do. Luckily for me, as someone who is starting college applications, I conveniently decided that I was going to walk alongside the DSC rather than in front of them. So I am very excitingly awaiting to hear what their ideas are for moving forward. But don't think I wasn't doing anything. Because I decided instead to focus on the little things. Director Konstam during this meeting brought up earlier, how do we improve the culture in our schools? So, I have no complex or strategic plan to share, which I know is very on PBS. But I have no surprising idea that- Sorry. So I have no necessarily inspiring ideal that can promise you equitable outcomes. But I have, in my observe, in observing education both as a student and in this new role, that seemingly the only thing that public education seems to have in abundance is passion. Education has attracted the most engaged group of individuals, the one who put their passion for people over their money and their economic situation, who are personally invested and who we work to educate and protect. Teachers, parents, community members, and students alike pour their energy into solving problems and solving the inequalities and disputes that they see before them. Our communities sit in drafty boardrooms on their night off, awaiting their three-minute allotment to solve those problems. Teachers spend long unpaid hours grading papers that their students potentially invested very little into, all to fulfill their why. Yet, parents go home from these meetings to continue to worry about their children. Teachers return to classrooms full of kids who have no idea how lucky they are, and students return to their mountain of homework. I think that the most important thing that we can do is in order to implement strategies and plans, we must have a group of people that know what we are entering into. We must have a group who are ready and prepared to implement these strategies. And we must acknowledge the hard work and effort that every single person contributes to making our district a better place. So, what I'm going to try to do this year is to focus on recognition. PBS is full of people, of parents, of students, of alumni who care about who we serve. And so I want to recognize those people and make sure that as we move forward into this year, that we are prioritizing, thanking, recognizing, celebrating, and sharing the work and passion that each person involved in this district has for our students. So I look forward to working alongside you all in doing that, and I cannot wait to get started. And so my first recognition, I would actually like to say, is we have a representative from McDaniels here, JJ, who has willingly decided to come and watch a board meeting during their summer. So, thank you so much. I look forward to working with everyone.
I, I want to jump on that a little bit, Student Representative McMahon, and give a huge thank you to Kara tonight, who has dealt with some technical issues with Grace and has made it happen, even though it's not what we're used to. And you talk about passion, and I know we have passion in the classrooms, passion in our community. We have passion in our staff. And I know Kara was the school secretary and now helps be the board secretary, but just her work and dedication makes it possible so that we can communicate with everyone. So, thank you, Kara.
I love that. Thank you, Student Representative McMahon. And it's actually one of the things that I stole from Director Hollins is the whole idea of appreciation and accountability. And, and one of the things that I'm also hoping to do, and we didn't even plan this beforehand, is, is make sure that we are spending some time appreciating what is happening in the district because there is a tremendous amount of good that's happening in the district. So you've let it off tonight, and I really appreciate it. And it's something that I, a theme we want to continue because we're going to spend a lot of time holding folks accountable, but we need to spend a lot of time appreciating the work that's happening as well. So thanks for that. And with that, great segue. Superintendent Guerrero, I think you have an update on the preparations for our students coming back to school next week, which my own children are so excited about.
Yes, thank you, Chair Scott, and I appreciate that balanced approach that you describe. Good evening, directors. I'm going to take my monthly superintendent's report and actually take the occasion to provide you with a back-to-school update. And the students are coming back in a week, so we're excited about the new school year. So tonight, we're going to provide everyone with a high-level overview of our state of readiness as we welcome our students back. So you'll hear some operational, you'll hear some health and safety. But what we're really enthusiastic about is our renewed focus on teaching and learning. After all that, that's our core mission. So to our students, families, and staff, we're anxious to see you. We're excited to have you back. Here at PPS, you know, we're continuing to be guided by our community's ambitious vision, ambitious vision that talks about a graduate who's prepared to enter the world more confident, optimistic, prepared for the future. It also describes how we as educators and as a system as a whole, our duty is to nurture their brilliance each and every day. And that, directors, is our focus this school year. So more on teaching, our teaching and learning agenda in just a moment. But first, we want to let you know who or how many students exactly we're expecting at this point to, for us to have the privilege of serving here at the start of the school year. So first, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Renard Adams to share with you some specific numbers regarding our enrollment and registration numbers at this point.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening and happy new school year, everyone. We wanted to provide an enrollment update based on current registrations as of August sixteenth. On the slide, you can see our actual enrollments for the 2020, 2021, and the 2021, 2022 school years. Also shown on the slide are, is our projected enrollment for this year and the, which is the 2022, 2023 school year, and our current registration numbers. As of August sixteenth, we've registered over twenty-seven hundred kindergarten students. Historically, we've seen about twenty percent of kindergarten students enroll during the two weeks prior to the first day of school. And if this pattern continues, we expect to see another five hundred or so kindergarten students. This will get us to right around our actual projected enrollment numbers for kindergarten for this school year, which is reflected again in the third column on the chart that you have before you. As you may also notice and can see, in some grade bands, we're seeing slightly larger numbers of registered students than what we projected for enrollment. But I want to be really clear. Registered students does not mean the same or equal enrolled students. Enrollment numbers will be clarified beginning on the first day of school with regular attendance and by October one, when we finalize our count. What you have here is a reflection of the families who have indicated that they are planning to enroll students at PPS next year, or they have students who were previously enrolled but might not be attending this year, which we may not know about until after the school year starts.
I also just want to note here, our schools, our school principals, Jonathan Garcia, Chief of Staff, our school principals who just returned from summer break are working with central office leaders to understand, make adjustments, and prepare to welcome our students back to school. Of course, our numbers will be firmed up as students come back to school, and the registration numbers that are in front of you will continue to shift.
Can we ask questions during the presentation, or do you want us to wait till the?
Quick questions during the presentation would be great.
So just quickly on the enrollment, so I think we engaged a lot of students through the summer school programming, which was great, so it wasn't a huge break. But I'm curious if we have in place or have had in place any sort of district-wide enrollment of like what students left PPS? And so doing the sort of, we'd love to have you back. So I'm curious about whether that's happened in addition to the kindergarten roundups, which I know are happening all over the place, or kindergarten meetups.
I cannot say that that has happened, no.
I have a quick question. Did since the add-backs that we were aware of in the budget process, have we had any more add-backs based on current registration over the summer?
No, we're closely monitoring enrollment, and once we do the ten-day count, then we'll have a better sense. There may be some earlier decisions made about kindergarten because as they come in and start attending, we can quickly maneuver and adjust. But most of that will come after the ten-day drop.
So just, when you say add-back, Director Konstam, are you talking about teachers being added back? So I'm curious, like, the, there was two add-backs this summer at Lowerhurst. Was that because of foundation funding, or was that they crossed over a threshold?
I'll have to be back in touch with you on that. I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I'll proceed, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Adams, for the enrollment update. So we are indeed excited to welcome back the forty-seven thousand students nearly here at PPS. And if you're a kindergarten family, as we were just sharing, we can't wait to welcome you to our school community as well. This summer, our school district has, you know, really renewed its focus to ensuring high-quality teaching and learning experience for our students every, in every classroom, every day. Also, this past June, the school board refreshed its four goals for accelerating achievement for our students of color in particular by eliminating those persistent generational, and I think the word was unacceptable, opportunity and outcome gaps. We've laid those out in third-grade reading, fifth-grade math, eighth-grade readiness, and high school graduation. Ultimately, we've agreed these goals are strong indicators of our success, particularly in graduating students, students who are prepared to change and improve the world. So let me say a little bit more about the teaching and learning agenda we're embarking on. We remain committed to our district's theory of action. It clearly articulates our commitment to ensuring our Black and Native students in particular experience opportunity and success. We don't have any interest in just admiring the problem. Instead, we're doubling down our efforts to disrupt and eliminate disparities and improve students' learning experiences and their academic achievement outcomes. That means we got to focus on providing every student a consistent access to grade-level content and standards-based aligned learning materials. It also means supporting our educators, providing essential professional learning, coaching and support for teachers and school leaders. And evidence of this renewed focus has been in full effect this summer. I want to share a little bit of what I mean by that. A photo can speak a thousand words. What's the phrase? Is worth a thousand words. Because hundreds and hundreds of teachers and every one of our school leaders have invested significant time this summer learning about our district's new curriculum adoptions and instructional framework. Teachers have participated in two summer institutes and other professional cadre trainings. School administrators have invested in their learning and opening of school preparation during our week-long Leadership Institute. Our goal this summer has been to support our educators and school leaders, get familiar with new content. Our collective goal is to ensure every student is becoming proficient in grade-level content and standards. And of course, it isn't, it hasn't just been our adults at PPS who've been busy engaging in their learning. Our students, our students have also been very busy this summer, as you know. Directors will be hearing a more detailed wrap-up and summary of all of our summer programming at our next regular meeting of the board. But I know many directors had a chance to visit some of our summer programs. I did too, and frankly, it was quite incredible, the broad array of activity. I'm proud that our district invented, invested its state summer programming monies, which we supplemented with additional federal one-time monies to provide one of the largest summer programs in PPS history. At the next school board meeting, you're going to hear a comprehensive review and update. But just to preview of some of the summary here, high school students attempted over two thousand credits. And next week, I look forward to joining directors and celebrating our 2022 summer graduates. Overall, more than thirty-seven hundred students kindergarten to eighth grade participated in summer learning acceleration opportunities across twenty-five schools. Students also participated in an array of enrichment activities led by an impressive array of more than fifty community-based summer partners. And we welcomed new kindergarteners to school early across nineteen classrooms. As directors know, our Early Kindergarten Transition Program, EKT, is a successful three-week summer program that slowly welcomes new kindergartners and their families early, ensuring a smoother, positive entrance into the school system. All of this activity could not be possible without the dedication of our educators, staff, administrators, and community partners. Thank you. Thank you for making this summer enrichment and learning possible for our students. Our central office teams, such as HR, Business, and Finance, they've also been busy this summer. They've been hard at work. Both our school modernization and our IT teams have also been productive. They've maintained a steady and ambitious set of summer projects. Among accomplishments, this includes ninety gym floors have been completely refinished, five new roofs have been installed, and two seismic retrofit projects have also been completed. Added to the list, a new softball field for Grant High School, a new track and field at Roosevelt High School. Side note, a track of the same quality, high quality, as the one you'll find at the Hayward Complex at the U of O. And after years of being separated at two campuses, we're excited to bring the Access Academy School Community all back together in a dedicated and remodel new home next week as well. And in a week, the new Lincoln High School will open its doors, making it the next comprehensive high school in PPS to be rebuilt into a world-class learning campus for our students and staff. We hope everybody can join the September seventeenth grand opening celebration. And as always, I want to take the opportunity to thank the voters of the city of Portland for their overwhelming support and to understanding how important investing in our public schools truly is. Thank you for that. Staffing, I'm excited to share with you that we are staffed and prepared to provide home-to-school transportation service to every eligible student here at PPS. Last year was challenging for most school systems. I recognize that. That's why we've made a concerted effort to begin this school year diversifying our transportation partners. We have two instead of one, helping us to operate two-hundred-and-sixty-four routes at the start of this school year. Operating these routes will ensure every student gets to and from school. Over the next few months, we expect to grow the number of routes to three-hundred. That'll improve efficiency, service, and create less ride time for students each and every day. And on continued positive news, also pleased to share with you that our school principals and central office teams have been hard at work interviewing and onboarding new educators and school-based staff. As of today, more than ninety-seven percent of elementary and K-five classroom positions and K-eights are filled with an identified homeroom teacher. with an identified homeroom teacher, 97%. When it comes to core content classrooms at the secondary level, that means the subjects of math, science, language arts, and social studies, we're looking there, we're looking good there as well. So overall, we are just over 200 school-based instructional vacancies. We're paying close attention to special education and are encouraging anyone who's in the Portland area, who's interested, or interested in moving to the Pacific Northwest, come join Team PPS. Our numbers are iterative, they're continuing to change. I can tell you that of the school-based vacancies, over 30% of them already have a candidate identified who is in progress of being welcomed into PPS.
Superintendent, just, can we take a pause for quick questions on this? You said 200 classroom-based, and I'm just trying to figure out how that relates to the numbers.
Right. So I was referring to homerooms when I mentioned the elementary number. There are other employee groups that, where we get to that 200 number. So there could be, there's counseling positions, there's qualified mental health providers, social workers, PE, elective classes, world languages, so there's some non, and some non-licensed school-based vacancies as well in totality.
Thank you.
So I'm curious, where would the education assistants and the paraeducators fall in these broader categories? Are they included in this, or is this?
I, I'm just referring to licensed educators here.
Yeah, they're, they're not included on, on the screen, but I have that information for you.
That'd be great. How are we doing? Because that's.
Of course. So, paraeducators, 93. We are, we have 93 vacancies in paraeducators, and 40% of those have already been identified in stage over the hiring process.
And what about the EAs? Is that broken out as well?
That's paraeducators. I don't have EAs, but I will make sure to get that information.
And then my other question, and this a little bit follows on the substitute, are we seeing any sort of trends of where the vacancies are? They district-wide or in clusters of schools, or in particular geographic areas, or?
That, that certainly of interest is, you know, do we see a pattern of, you know, impact at particular schools or not? All I can say is our HR team, our school principals, they're super active and busy in identifying folks. I couldn't tell you at the moment here without looking at the list if those are affecting a particular cluster or not.
And I just wanted to put this in the larger context, and I mean, I, you know, I think it was the Washington Post ran an article last week about the school-wide, nationwide school staffing shortages. And so, you know, I, I just seconding what you said, I mean, there are still positions to fill. In the context of what we're seeing nationwide, I think as a district, we're doing really well, and I think that speaks to the aggressive recruiting we've been doing all summer long, and, and really all year long. And so, anything we can do as a board to continue to help, please let us know. And, and again, I think the information the Director Ben Edwards is, is asking for is once things settle down, and you know, it will be good, good to know that retro, retro, it'll be good to know that once we have everyone in place. I, I think right now what I'm hearing is we're just in this sprint to like one week to go, and let's get those positions.
Absolutely, and not interested in distracting folks. The, the, the numbers are changing on a daily basis, lots of interviewing happening, I can assure you, across every one of our buildings, including here. Two other employee groups I want to mention on the custodial and nutrition services front, happy to share that all, 100% of our part-time custodial positions are filled, and we're getting close to filling remaining full-time positions as well. More than 60% of the vacancies have been filled by candidates or, or in the process of being on boarded. So, you know, we're, we're in pretty good shape there relative to, to previous years.
Does that, go ahead.
I was just wondering how we doing with our recruitment of educator, educators of color, especially our child-facing educators of color?
Sure. I don't have the demographic data in front of me.
Yeah, we can get that information for you at the next board meeting. So just so folks have a, a understanding, we will continue to update you regularly over the course of the next few weeks, or a few, a few board meetings on back to school. So make sure we'll bring that information forward.
Great, because I think that's almost our, our strongest suit for attracting families is like they arrive that first day of school, and there's a teacher in the classroom, a permanent principal. The question I was going to ask on the custodians, have we, I know last year in the budget process, there were a number cut, and I'm wondering, does that include the Rover pool, or how, how are we doing on that? You can also, like, tell us next meeting.
Another good detailed question, I don't want to put our COO on the spot with it. I, I think it's taken into account all the positions. Yeah.
So we'll have a Rover pool.
Will there be a roving pool?
Which is not this year.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to proceed. I'm going to actually turn it over to our Chief of Staff, Jonathan Garcia, to talk through a few slides of information here related to health and safety protocols for, for the year.
Thank you, Superintendent. And as we were talking earlier about substitutes, I just want to also give that, that number. We have 400 and about 450 teacher subs cleared to take jobs today, with an additional 350 finishing mandatory training and/or renewal requirements. So again, kudos to our HR team for the aggressive push there. Here at PPS, we're committed to promoting safe and healthy learning environments so that high-quality and joyful learning, teaching and learning can happen in our schools. We've learned a lot in the last two years about COVID-19 and respiratory illnesses. From the beginning of the global pandemic, we've been guided by advice from the public, from public health experts, made adjustments based on new data and updated science, and applied what we've learned to guide our response. As a result, we're in a better place today as a community with more ways to protect ourselves and each other from COVID-19 and other communicable diseases, including vaccinations, boosters, access to testing, availability of high-quality masks, and improved ventilation. This year, PPS plans to use layered health and safety measures and strategies like testing availability, required COVID-19 vaccination for staff and volunteers, and continuing to be a communication vessel for public health recommendations for individuals and their families. So what does that mean? In your board packet, you have a memo from Dr. John Franco and I, which outlines the steps we're taking, the protocols we have in place, and the recommendations we will share with our community related to COVID-19 and other respiratory and communicable diseases. In short, here at PPS, we are building a culture and a community of care, one where every individual, whether a student, staff, or family, must do their individual part to protect themselves and others from respiratory illnesses like the flu or COVID-19. That means staying home when you're sick, wearing a mask based on your personal risk assessment. Each school will have ready access to high-quality masks for anyone who requests one. It means getting tested for COVID-19 if you're feeling sick. We will continue to collaborate with the Oregon Health Authority, who will continue to offer free COVID-19 testing options for, for staff and students. Of course, we've stated here many times before, we, all institutions and individuals must follow and closely monitor public health guidance and recommendations. We, of course, will follow all local and state rules for health services and communicable disease control, and implement best practices to mitigate the impact on school communities. And it means getting vaccinated and boosted against communicable diseases like COVID-19 and the flu. Here at PPS, we will continue to partner with health organizations to provide these free of charge to families, students, and staff. PPS understands that airflow and circulation are critical components that support everyday health. That is why here at PPS, we've taken numerous steps to improve air quality across our buildings, and we are confident that our systems are safe and meet all regular, regulatory standards for air quality. In fact, here at PPS, we've spent more than $5.8 million to improve ventilation in our schools, including making sure every classroom and learning space is equipped with a portable HEPA filter, upgrading and regular maintaining building filters, which are now meeting MERV-13 standards, regular inspection and review of air quality in every building. And in 2020, Portland voters approved $75 million to upgrade HVAC systems across the district. I am confident and proud of the tremendous effort we've done to provide healthier and safer learning environments for our students, and I think these sets of strategies and learning updates, regular updates from public health and national experts will help us prepare for the year ahead. So what can we do, what can every single one of us do immediately? Make sure you're fully vaccinated or boosted. We plan on making vaccine clinics available here at the BESC next Monday for anyone in our community who is interested. And if you can't make it on Monday, know that our Montomone County Student Health Centers at five schools are open Monday through Friday, and will have vaccines and boosters readily available for any youth in our community. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Jonathan, for the health and safety update. While we're talking about the start of the school year, next Tuesday, the reality is that many opening of school activities, in some cases are already in motion. So while classes haven't officially started, many of our students are already participating and reconnecting in a variety of school activities. This includes quite an array of community building, gatherings, leadership retreats. There's been schools hosting organized kindergarten playdates at the local parks, and of course, fall athletics and sports are underway, soccer, football, cross-country, for example. And you'll appreciate this, Director Lowry, high school bands have started coming together too. They're busy practicing their pep band tracks for not just athletic events, but for welcoming back students, for building community as the school year starts. The other Friday, we had a chance to run into the Lincoln Band already at work in their new state-of-the-art band room, and I know that they're ready for that as well. So directors, this is just a quick overview of our preparations and efforts aimed at ensuring a positive start of the new school year. I want to thank all the educators and staff for all of the hard work that they're putting in, and for their role in making sure we're ready, we're ready to welcome back our students. And for the many of our students who are transitioning to either a new middle or high school experience, that also includes getting a jump start to become familiar with, get oriented to their new school campuses. And the same is true for our new kindergarten and preschool Head Start students, who'll be starting their educational careers here at PPS. I know that this is an exciting time for both families and our youngest scholars. Thank you, directors.
Thank you, Superintendent. Yeah, so are there any questions from the board?
I had a couple additional ones. Thank you for that great presentation. I think there's just general excitement. It seems like it's going to be a great start of the school year. One question around sort of health and safety issues, just looking at the 10-day forecast, that it's still going to be really hot. So there was a question around COVID and everything else about the windows opening, but if you're in a building that there's no air conditioning, I'm wondering, I know there had been some review of whether windows could be open, and just like where, where do parents go, or school staff go if they have questions, and is that something that PPS is prepared to?
It's a great time to.
Answer questions about, or like, how are people going to know? I can just tell people are going to, we're going to start hearing the, my kid's on the second floor, and there's no windows that open.
Chief operator, Officer Dan Young.
Good evening. Yeah, when there are particularly hot days, we typically look at the temperature of about 90 or 95, we'll stand up a group, our Emergency Operations Committee, to look to see if we have spaces that are particularly hot, and we look to deploy specific to those schools what we might need to do. And so sometimes that is deploying fans if, if we need out at certain schools, sometimes it's potentially moving students to spaces that are cooler. Usually those temperatures don't last for an extended period of time, at least not so much right now, but those are our immediate reactions that we take to when we have particularly hot days.
Like with COVID, is there a place on the website where parents could go? Just like I say, I know there's the start, school's starting, my school's an old school. Where do they look to get that information, or do they just call the school?
It, it's handled and managed at the school level, and so it would be a place to go to the individual schools if there are specific questions. If there was something where at the district-wide we would take an action or make a decision, we would communicate that to the district or those individual schools.
Later this week, we will also be publishing our standard operating procedures for the school year and sharing those broadly with our families and staff. In that, we'll outline, you know, standard operating procedures for everything related to health and safety. So we have about 10, 10 or so protocols in place related to communicable diseases for the year.
Following on that, I think that's great, because I think the more communication, and staff did a great job through the pandemic of providing lots of information over and over again, because sometimes you have to tell people multiple ways. In the standard operating procedures, is there anything related to air exchange that has changed from last year, or that, providing guidance, like, don't turn, you know, don't turn down, turn it down, or here's what to put in the room so it's not so loud, or that seemed to be an issue last?
Our procedures for ventilation are pretty similar to last year. We're continuing to maximize airflow with the standard operating procedure we have. So all of our building mechanical systems have been augmented to open the dampers so they bring in the maximum amount of fresh air that come into the systems. We run the systems longer throughout the day. Every one of our learning spaces has a portable HEPA filter in those spaces, and we are continuing with our quarterly inspections of all of our buildings' ventilation systems, and then we have a separate contractor. If there's any deficiencies that are found, they go and respond to those. It was over a year ago, in 2021, we had our industrial hygienist who we have on contract go out and do indoor air quality testing, sampling at all of our schools, and came back and said that the air quality in every one of the schools, you know, looked good, and they were occupiable schools. So we're continuing with a lot of those similar practices that we put in place two years ago.
And then we, just to add here, as part of the communication that will be going out, for example, I here have a one-pager that's still in draft, you know, but outlines, for example, that building ventilation, especially in our classrooms, for example, is a combination of many elements, right? Outside air supply, airflow measured by CFM or cubic feet per minute, the temperature, humidity, building filtration. So there are a number of aspects connected to air, building ventilation that we want to share and be transparent, you know, with our community, so there's a clear, a clear understanding of, of ventilation in our schools.
Additional questions?
I just wanted to comment that how inspiring it was to be able to be a part of some of the leadership, the activities at Leadership Week. This is with our principals and assistant principals. I didn't have a chance to join in with the educators the next week, but it was so clear that the focus for building leaders was so tight on student academic achievement and in individualized supports, and in high expectations for the, the brilliance and the potential of every single one of our students. And for me, I'm a layperson, but it felt very different, because it not only felt like there was a much higher degree of accountability for our educators and for our building leaders, but it also felt like there was a much greater degree of support. And that, I felt that really deeply, but it was also really great to talk to our principals and everyone in the room. People were pumped up. They felt like, you know, let's do this, let's just watch our kids soar, let's help our kids soar. And it was a kind of enthusiasm and positivity that frankly, I haven't seen or felt in a long time. And I think, you know, it has to do with the fact that we've, this work takes time, and we've had a, a good team in place now for several years, and we continue to attract just absolutely top-notch leadership, looking at you, Dr. Proctor, and all of you, everyone. But it, it was really palpable in that room and really exciting to be there.
Yeah, no, thank you so much for, for sharing those comments. Good evening, Board Directors and Student Representative, Bronny, right? Byron. Byron. So definitely an exciting time in the school year when we get with our educators and our school leaders, and we set the vision and set the expectation that we have for what we want to see our students experience. And yes, thank you so much for coming to our Leadership Institute, and it was grounded not only in those high expectations about what we want our students to experience in teaching and learning, and the role that school leaders play specifically in driving those efforts in each and every one of their buildings as principals and assistant principals, but the theme of the week was also grounded deeply in equity and ensuring that we provide equitable experiences for every single child in the building. And we used data, we used anecdotal observations, we used our strong focus on our instructional framework that we're extremely excited about, and our strong focus on the implementation of newly adopted curriculum, which is really exciting. And pairing that with our updates in our scope and sequence through. pairing that with our updates in our scope and sequence through our GVC really helps to ensure that we have now a truly guaranteed viable curriculum, because now we have the piece of curriculum added to it. So everyone was excited in the space with the leadership and the charge that was given by Superintendent Guerrero. I don't know if you were able to come back on the last day, but the room was electric with our student performances. And I encourage us collectively just to continue to keep our students in the center. It's really important, you know, we talk about our accolades and our appreciations, and no better way than to start a board meeting, right, with celebrating students. And, you know, so we look forward to continuing to update the board on our progress towards these efforts.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
Hopefully, you all heard, we're taking, we're putting great energy into making sure we're very ready and prepared. We are. All the nuts and bolts, our operations center will be up on the first day of school. Our principals have a hotline to report out these issues. I know you have some questions there, but rest assured, we're going to do everything we can to make sure we have a positive start to the school year. And again, just to reiterate, what we're most excited about is squarely putting our time and effort into the teaching and learning. That's why we were here, and that's our why, and so we're excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. And continuing with the theme of appreciation, I think just seeing the summer school successes that you've outlined are amazing. We talked about the hiring a little bit as well, and just this overall preparation to get back to school is pretty phenomenal. And coming off, I don't think anyone would disagree, it was a very tough year. And I think, you know, I don't think Central Office got a rest or relaxed much, but, but getting ready for this new school year and getting people, like you said, excited. It was, it was nice to be with the leadership team, and I'm excited for the school year. So, thank you for that update. Is there any other business at this time before we adjourn?
Yes. So...
Vice Chair.
Thank you. So this is outside of, I guess, PPS, I guess, but it's included them. So I was at a green transportation summit up in Tacoma, and one of the things that I ended up looking at was the electric school buses. And so we was, had to tour, we got to ride in them and all that stuff. And one of the things that actually came up was our stance on our climate, climate policy, which was, I think, was really good, you know, when you're in a forum with, and I wasn't going up there for the school bus portion, but just being able to hear the appreciation that they had for what we're doing down here was awesome. And so, there's a lot of great thing that's going on around the whole school bus stuff, but I don't know who's in charge of that. But that was, that was great. I would want to make sure I talk to someone, because from what I hear, there's like billions of dollars coming and for priority school, yes, billions, yeah, that are coming down for green technology, especially for school buses procurements. So, propane, hydrogen, electric, it was all that, yeah.
We approved two at the last board meeting, two electric buses.
Yeah, but what I hear, we could get up to like twenty-three, right, with the rebate from the FED for priority schools or something like that. So we're talking, we're talking.
You're already previewing, and we're on it, and the team, we avail ourselves of every opportunity, and when that first electric bus comes off the supply chain issues, we will give you all a ride.
Yeah, yeah, but it was great, it was great to hear, you know, about us and about what we're doing down here.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on September sixth?
No, I'm just saying, I think I want to buy a bus at twenty-three, between my family and Gary's family, I think we could build a whole bus.
This meeting is adjourned.